Through her capacity, you know, in the, within the community. So I want to thank the two of them for, for just a wonderful two years and I wish them both the best of luck with their future endeavors. I also want to welcome our two, our two newest school committee members who will begin on December 16th. They're going to be sworn in, I believe, on December 1st. And that will be Ms. Amy Costa and Mr. Alan Leclerc. I look forward to partnering with them and to working with them. I, I know that, I'm sure that they'll do an amazing job working with Chairman Bourget, Vice Chair Burke and Mrs. Kapiskas to just do what's best for, for the students in this district and to do what's best for our community. So I'm, I'm looking forward to working with them and partnering with them to do some great things over the next two years. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I want to add my congratulations and thanks to both you, Mrs. NATO and Mrs. Capwell. You guys have done a fantastic job. And it's not just the, all the work that you've done, but it's all the, we've become a family. We've been, we're five individuals, but we formed one heck of a team. You could feel that right from the beginning, how well we work together, even though there are times we didn't agree, but we always came together and with a consensus and we worked. I thought we worked very well with the superintendent and the principals and administrators and teachers. We are all separate people. However, we all looked at the education process in our district, each in our own way. But it all, all of it enhanced my understanding and all our understanding of how, of what our district's about. So we would have been lacking if the both of you had not been on this committee. And I for one, I'm going to miss you both very much. And like I said, I wish it was a four-year term. I do. Congratulations on what you're going to be doing next. I look forward to working with you in some capacity, but, and I look forward to working with our two new members, Amy Costa and Alan Leclerc. But tonight is your night. You've done a fabulous job and I'm so glad you were on our committee. And you're going to be sorely missed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chair Burke?
I, I, I echo your same, your same comments. But you know, one thing that, that obviously Rebecca and Ellie have brought is that we have created a team, like you said. You know, if you read any of the local papers in Rhode Island, particularly Northern Rhode Island, you oftentimes read about dissensions and arguments and conflicts on school committees throughout, you know, Rhode Island. This was never the case for this particular school committee. We worked, we worked well together. I, I think we agreed more than we disagreed to be, for my assessment here. But obviously I said something similar to Rebecca last night and it also echoes for Ellie. All the things that you have done for the last two years will continue, right? You will continue. So your term may end, but your influence for the students of Wind Socket will continue in the years to come. And, and for that, you know, we are forever grateful. And again, Ellie and Rebecca, thank you. I enjoyed so much working with you on the first elected school committee in a while. And it really turned out to be a great partnership, working together. Best of luck to, to both of you. And again, also welcome to our two new members. I did reach out to them a couple of weeks ago and sent them a congratulatory email. So hopefully they received that and I look forward to working with them in, in the, in the two years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could, Chairman Bourget, just for my own parting words, since I can't never not talk. Um, I, my parting, my parting, thanks to my fellow school committee members. As, as both Chairman Bourget and Vice Chair Burke spoke about, we have developed a committee that is more family than it is committee. One that I really anticipate taking these relationships beyond, you know, just these two years. Lynn doesn't have a choice because she's my neighbor. So by default, all us to stay in contact with me. But you know, it is, it's been a pleasure, not just with the, the committee members, my subcommittee, which, you know, spoiler alert, Dr. McGee, you already said is the best subcommittee. It was unanimously voted upon. And so I will truly miss, miss that, that working relationship. You know, if there's, if there's any advice, and I'll give it even if it's not wanted, to the two incoming committee members is to wipe your brain of any preconceived notions of persons and people and, and things when it comes to the school committee. Leave political biases and alliances at the door. When you join up with your school committee of family members, that's all it is, is it's, it's school committee. It's nothing, it's nothing else. You're there for the students and for the teachers and for all of med. And as long as you maintain that as your focus and you can respectfully disagree, then you're going to have an amazing two years.
Thank you.
Well said.
Anyone else? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file recognitions and announcements. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. NATO, Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bourget?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. NATO?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the October 28th, 2020 open session minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Capwell. Any changes, deletions, additions?
We're good.
Hearing none, Dr. McGee, roll call please.
Chairman Bourget?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. NATO?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. NATO, Mrs. Capwell. Does any school committee member want to take any items out of, out of order? Or discuss any particular items within the consent agenda?
Nope.
Dr. McGee?
Chairman Bourget?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. NATO?
Yes.
Dr. McGee, your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the school committee. I'm going to begin with personnel matters. As the committee and the community are aware, we've changed the process by which we present the, any, any new staff to the district, any new hires and so on and so forth. So we have currently, I've approved 32 stipend positions across the district. The, the categories range from new teacher mentors to induction coaches to model classroom teachers. Those are all funded through Title II. So I, I'm very, very happy to say that we've, we fill those stipend positions, which are very, they're critical to the, to the function of our district. And, and really more importantly, they're critical to the support we provide to all of, all of our teachers and staff across the district. You know, that's one of the, one of the great things we, we have here in Wind Socket is we, we have a, a great opportunity for our staff to, to be supported, whether it's through, you know, their, their colleague mentors or model classroom teachers. So I'm very happy to announce that. The second item I have on my report is just a, a school and reopening update. I, I want to start with extending just my, my deepest thoughts and prayers to Leah Normandin's family. As you said earlier, Mr. Chairman, we unfortunately lost Leah. Leah was the main office secretary at Hamlet Middle School. And although I, I didn't get to know her very, very deeply or personally, I, I can tell you that every time I walked into Hamlet Middle School, she was there to greet me and anyone that walked through the, the front doors with a smile. And she will truly, truly be missed. You know, we, we talk about the Wind Socket Education Department being a family and she was a member of our family and we will miss her and we will never forget her and the mark that she left on this community, Hamlet Middle School and, and our, and our families. Next, Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to talk a little bit about how we've been doing with respect to COVID cases and, and quarantining and classrooms closing and, and schools closing. Most recently, the Pothier Citizens Campus closed, has closed for the remainder of this week as we continue to do some contact tracing and some contact interviews with respect to positive COVID case. Globe Park has, has closed four classrooms and Harris Elementary has closed six classrooms, again, due to positive COVID cases and, and close contacts with those positive cases. The Department of Health and Department of Education have been meeting with superintendents and we actually have a meeting scheduled with the Department of Health tomorrow to discuss contact tracing procedures as the, as the committee and the community is, is aware. The Department of Health has been court, have been coordinating the contact tracing procedures. And when I say contact tracing procedures, what I mean is that they've been reaching out to districts and notifying districts of positive COVID cases. And in return, we've been providing them with valuable information, including seating charts, so they know who to reach out and contact to ensure that, you know, either students or staff either have been or are not close contacts with people who test positive. So the, we've, and we've basically been doing the, the contact tracing ourselves to a certain degree. And we're going to be meeting with them again tomorrow to, to discuss the procedures of the contact tracing as we move forward. In terms of athletics, I just received an email before this meeting that was from Nancy Giordano, our athletic director. And the Rhode Island Inter-Scholastic League has sent out information indicating that winter sports will not start at least until January. They didn't provide a specific date, but they're looking at hopefully starting winter sports in, in January. Our winter sports here in Wind Socket would include boys and girls basketball as well as indoor track. I also want to make an announcement. I, I sent out a school messenger letter to parents and to staff today. And I know that our principals have sent information out to their, their staff and their families, notifying them that on Monday and Tuesday of next week, Monday, November 23rd and Tuesday, November 24th, those will be distance learning days. So there will not be students or staff, teaching staff that will be in the buildings on those, on those two days. Wednesday is, is the first day of our Thanksgiving break. So my thought process and rationale for doing that was I wanted to give our facilities and custodial departments the, the majority of, of the week, Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday, to, to go in and, and do a thorough cleaning of our schools prior to the Thanksgiving break. Tomorrow, the governor is supposed to make an announcement in, in terms of, you know, what the state's going to look like and what districts may look like beyond Thanksgiving. So the Thanksgiving from, from Thanksgiving to Christmas, that, that period of time. We're also going to, you know, track the, the progress of what's happening, both in the state and at, in, in Wind Socket when it comes to, you know, the, the incidence rate, the incidence rate of, of COVID positive cases. And, you know, we'll be making a determination as I'm sure every other district in the state will be making determinations as to what the weeks between Thanksgiving and Christmas will, will look like. You know, I've always said this and I, I'll continue to say this, that, you know, my first goal is to ensure this, the, the health and the safety of, of our students and our staff. So I will be looking at, you know, what are, what the options are in between those, those during the holiday season between Thanksgiving and, and Christmas. An update on the substitutes. We have had some contact with the Highlander Institute. Initially, we were supposed to receive 10 substitutes. At this point in time, we have two that they're going to send us. They've indicated to me that they are in the process of trying to get more subs for us and, and train them. This isn't unique to Wind Socket. This has been happening across the state. It's, it's, it's a case of folks are signing up to, to, to be a substitute. They're going through the training process and then at the last minute, they're dropping out for whatever reason. So this, this is not just hap, hasn't just happened here in Wind Socket. Unfortunately, it's happening across the state. It's very frustrating, but you know, we're doing the best we can to try to, you know, get as many subs as we can in, into, into our district as we move forward. Lastly, I, I'd like to share with the committee and with the community some of the many positive things that are happening in our schools around our, our hybrid model as well as our, our virtual model. And one of the things I, I did about a week ago was I, I asked our principals to provide me with some information about some of the good things that, that staff are, are doing and, and the hard work that our teachers and staff are, are really putting into this school year. You know, they, our, our teachers and staff work tirelessly always, but especially during this time where it's not just creating a lesson plan for students that are in person, right? That's what our, our teachers and staff do already. This is really creating, what they're doing is really creating two lesson plans for, for each, you know, each class, each group that they're seeing. And they, they really have done an incredible job and I, I take my hat off to them. I, I couldn't be prouder of the work that they're doing, of the work that our administrators are doing. And I just want to share with you, I'll, I'll be sharing out from each school moving forward. But I just wanted to, to let you know, for example, at, at Savoy Elementary, our teachers are working with their, with their students on World Kindness Day, which was November 13th, and just working with their, with their kids on how to be kind to people. And, you know, what, what we, what we forget sometimes is that teachers don't all, don't just teach content to students, but, but teachers teach character to students, you know, through modeling it and, and through promoting it. And, you know, the, the teachers and staff at, at Savoy are doing that. They've also been working at Savoy on Veterans Day projects to honor our veterans. I know Principal Codere and, and her, her staff typically, when we're in person, they have a wonderful celebration of, of the veterans here in the city. And, and I've attended it in the past and, and it really is heartwarming. And unfortunately, couldn't do that this year because of, you know, obvious reasons. But they did create assignments and activities for their students to partake in, including things like interviewing veterans and, and doing it, you know, virtually. So I, I want to, I want to thank Mrs. Codere and her staff for that. Another example is at the Citizens Pothier Campus, Principal Moniz, her, her teachers and social workers have created social emotional learning boards, which they use to check in with students. And it's been a, a great way for them to, to gauge daily how their students are doing. And again, you know, it's, it's not just teaching the content. It's, it's, it's teaching these soft skills and these interpersonal skills and making sure that their students are, are doing well emotionally during this time. So I, I want to thank them for the work that, that they're doing at, at Citizens Pothier. I also want to, to reach out to the Hamlet Middle School. A science teacher there on Team 82, Mrs. Green, has, has created a, is currently creating a, a virtual field trip for her students. They're going to be virtually touring with folks from, from, from NOAA, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, where the kids are going to be actually touring in real time, but virtually on, on one of the NOAA ships. They'll be able to ask questions in real time and learn how to use radar and sonar to collect data about the earth's climate. And lastly, but, but not least, I know at Villanova Middle School in, in October, October was, was National Bullying Prevention Month. And Mrs. Granato and her staff and, and teachers worked on an anti-bullying campaign virtually and, and hybrid with, with their students there. So those are just some examples of the amazing work that our, our teachers and staff and administrators are doing. And I, I didn't, I didn't mention every school this evening. I, those that I didn't mention this evening, I'm going to get to the, at the next school committee meeting. But I think it's important for the school committee and the, and the community at large to really hear this, the specific stories of, of how our teachers and staff are working tirelessly with, with our students, to not only provide them with an exceptional education when it comes to, you know, reading, math, science and social studies, but also those soft skills and making sure that our students and their families are doing well during these very difficult times. So again, I, I'm, you know, I'm going to say how proud I am of, of everyone. It, it's an honor to be working for the, the folks here in, in this school department. They go above and beyond every single day and I just want to thank them all for the, the amazing work that they do every day for our students and their families. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. McGee, that was outstanding to hear about those special projects that are being carried out in, you know, created in all our schools. And I think you might consider a newsletter, put it in writing. Not only it's a discussion at the school committee meeting, because right now we've got, what, 25 people, 41 people that are involved in a meeting. But the more you can reach, whether it's a newspaper, radio, we can talk about this when we go to NRI. But I think you need to spread this out. People need to know how well that the students are, are, are being treated and what kind of an education they're getting, a well-rounded education. I think that's important because I think sometimes we lose sight of the ABCs and, you know, the three Rs, but there's so much more that these children are getting, are getting out of this education. So the more you can spread the word, the better off I think everyone's going to be. Any other, any other comments for Dr. McGee?
Well, very good.
Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a superintendent's report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. NATO, Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bourget?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell?
Uh, we can't hear you. You're muted. You might be muted.
I know, I'm actually called in as well because it was freezing. So yes, I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. NATO.
Yes.
Wonderful. Next, we'll go into the school subcommittee reports. First is the finance subcommittee. Mr. Perrier, would you give us a summary of what we covered today?
Yeah, yes, absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Even though it seems that by popular consensus, the finance subcommittee is an unranked entity by the Wind Socket Education Department, we decided to have a meeting via Google at 3:00 PM today. We cut that, we touched on a handful of topics. The first was I provided an update on our CARES Act funding. We're at, in the process, applying with, it's a pretty long process. We are working through it with RIDE and we have gotten some of the grants approved. We're still working through as well. We did receive some information that purchases will be allowed after the grant deadline date as long as it's placed before December 30th. So that's promising news. And the reason for that is the federal government does realize, does recognize that there are some problems with supply chains, solutions, supply chains right now and that items may not be received in time. So we do have some flexibility there. The other topic that we touched on was OPEB performance. We had a discussion on this with the school committee last time and we've decided to add it to the finance subcommittee meeting. Our finance subcommittee meeting is going forward. Once every quarter, we'll be sitting down, we'll be taking a look at what, how the OPEB is tracking. And then based on that information, we'll make some adjustments, how, how things are progressing and how the current outlooks look with the stock market. So we're going to keep an eye on that. We'll do it quarterly and if we decide to make any changes, we'll bring it up to the school committee and the school committee can select those changes if we decide to change how we're funding that OPEB account. The other two items, the presentation of the financial report, I'll change on in a moment. And also the other item we had was the COVID MOA or the high school boilers we're putting in. You'll be approving that a little bit later in this agenda. It's just going to rear an approval from the school committee and we'll have $150,000 to put towards that boiler replacement that we're currently working on at the high school.
Thank you, Mr. Perrier. And as he, as he discussed, the OPEB, the OPEB account is going to be treated pretty much like a monitored, like we would monitor an investment committee so that we could look at the, the performance on, on the investments and make any necessary changes as we go along. And we'll be looking at that quarterly, although there may be an analysis when we need it. So that'll be something that the finance subcommittee will take under its wing. Any other comments, questions for Mr. Perrier? I'll make a motion or place on, receive and place on file the finance subcommittee update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. NATO, Dr. McGee, please.
Chairman Bourget?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
NATO?
Yes.
Next, we'll hear from the self-promoted best subcommittee in the district, Technology Subcommittee. I'll turn it over to its two representatives, Mrs. Capwell and Vice Chair Burke.
Thank you, Chairman Bourget. And am I coming through or am I breaking up?
You're fine.
You're fine.
Awesome. Vice Chair Burke, would you like me to take the lead on a recap of our meeting?
I would love to give you the last word.
I'm not using. I will say in advance that I had, so we started off talking about work orders. I think it's important for people to recognize that we did have some downtime at McPhee just due to coronavirus, COVID and having to do some quarantining. And so there was a, a gap there where work orders could be addressed. So they did see, and Al weighed in on the specific numbers, but they did see a higher volume of unattended to or unresolved ticket items than they would normally like to see in their queue. Now that they are back, they have been attacking those work orders and reducing them at a high solution rate. And so that was really just something, something that Al wanted to make sure that the committee was aware of. We had a spike, we are tackling it and bringing that back. Additionally, when it comes to some of the technological or technology purchases that we've made for enhanced assets to get into the hands of our teachers and students, we are seeing to, coming, starting to see some of those orders roll in. The largest order by far was one of the ones that the committee just recently approved, which were the enhanced tools to add on to what the teachers already have. So iPads and pens. That order is not slated to come in until January. There is, Apple is seeing a bit of a, a delay just given volumes of various or, like items that are, that are coming through. So those are expected to come in, in Denver. The middle school did have Chromebooks come in. to come in in Denver. The middle school did have Chromebooks come in for the teachers, the replacement Chromebooks that have larger screens. Those are going to get deployed to the teachers. They will be taking back in and reconciling the existing Chromebooks from the teachers and then deploying them back out to students as needed for replacements or or added Chromebooks as necessary. I think the last thing that we really touched on was, and we've talked about it in a previous school committee meeting before, is that we have an opportunity to change our telephone provider. We had gone out for a quote, received one back from a company called Granite. We did recognize substantial cost savings. We knew we were going to get something, and it was the combination of cost savings to the tune of around $1,500 a month, plus this acknowledgement that we would be getting better services that has triggered the forward motion on actually moving to this new telephone services provider in recognizing that we really want to kick this off on the best foot possible. A mid-year transition was not really going to be in the cards. And so they have landed, and Al, correct me, on a June or July deployment for making this transition. And then we wrapped up with the next meeting date, which is January 26. Did I miss anything, guys?
Vice Chair Burke, anything to add?
Once again, Mrs. Capwell has commented and got everything done exactly. There's nothing more I can add. Well done.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the Technology Subcommittee update, and we'll give you a gold star. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. NATO. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Rebecca.
Yes, sorry, my computer frozen. Yes.
Mrs. NATO.
Yes.
Next, we'll go to the Facilities Subcommittee update. I'll ask our Director of Operations to take us through the items that we covered today.
Whoever knows, facilities is number one as well. Technologies one A, facilities is one B. They're both number one.
You might have been one A if certain drinks dropped in a stairwell today, but we'll go, we'll take one B.
Oh, thank you, Chairman.
It never ends.
Nope. Okay, so we discussed the COVID-19 preparations in the district. We are consistently ordering or reordering personal protective equipment and keeping that in stock. We have an additional HEPA filter unit order coming in from the state as a backup to the ones that we had already purchased. We then discussed boilers at the high school, the project that the committee's already approved, which is in progress and on time, on schedule, knock on wood. We talked about boilers at the Crete Tech Center, their age, and some repairs that were done, and the necessity to possibly have to do some replacement or more repair work there. We then discussed the winter preparations for, well, winter storms and winter weather in general, and what the Facilities Department is doing to get the buildings and the facilities ready to go for any potential winter events, snowstorms. We then moved on to custodial subservices cleaning in general, in terms of our staffing levels, where we're at, and the additional need for subs in the district and potential opportunities, and then discussed some additional exploration in that area in terms of how we can backfill and get our needs met. And then the last thing we discussed was transportation, which was just a brief update that as of today, we've had very little transportation issues reported to us, taking into consideration that Durham Transportation Services is only transporting half our students currently. So that would be expected. I believe that that covered everything, Chairman, unless there was something else I missed.
No, you covered pretty much everything we covered. Any questions for our director? Any comments? Dr. McGee, please.
Chairman Borger. Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell. Mrs. NATO.
Yes.
Next, we'll go into conferences and discussions. Mr. Perrier, would you take us through the financial update?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. In front of the school committee this evening is the September 30, 2020 fiscal update for the General Fund. At the bottom line, currently, we are looking at about $133,000 surplus for the fiscal year. And let me talk about some of the financial highlights of this particular financial update. On the revenue side.
Do you want to share? You want to share that schedule?
Yeah, I thought it was in everyone attached with everyone.
Just we'll have it right here on the screen.
Oh, you want me to? I can put it on the screen, absolutely.
That'd be good. There we go.
So the here's the here's the summary, as this is what I can show everybody on the screen. We're currently looking at a little under $133,000 surplus through June 30, 2021. That's how things are projected out right now. For the revenue side, as I was mentioning earlier, some financial highlights, taxes levied from local government units, which is the city contribution, is projected to be $250,000 under budget. The additional $250,000 in funding that was asked for was not applied to city during their budgeting process the end of the last fiscal year. We are being funded at our fiscal year 20 level as of right now. At this time, the income is projected to be under budget $126,000, and that's simply due to the fact that there had, we're in the midst of a pandemic, and there haven't been many requests for building use at this moment in time. Hopefully, as we get through this, we might see a little uptick as we get closer to the close of the fiscal year. For this projection, our state aid is still at the level originally approved by the state back when they originally did their budget. Over the next few months, the district should be receiving a final adjustment number, if any. Hopefully, sometime in January, we'll receive our final number for our state aid for this fiscal year. And if that, when I receive that information, I'll certainly pass it on to the Finance Subcommittee and the school committee itself. A few highlights on the expenditure side. Currently, all regular salaries are projected to be $1.3 million under budget at this time. And when netted with the $854,000 in employee turn allowance, the district is $453,000 under budget. And these surpluses can be contributed directly to unfilled budgeted positions at this time. The substitute salaries law is currently projected to be $581,000 budget, which is pretty significant for that line. It's been difficult to secure substitutes for in-person learning during the pandemic, which has led to a full savings. But we're also still doing classrooms that are fully virtual. So there's been no need for substitutes, which also leads to savings. Regular time is projected to be $524,000 over budget. The reason we're over budget on that was due to the period that we were paying double time for overtime for 1137 employees. Normal overtime rules now are in effect district-wide for all overtime expenses. Medical expenses are currently $809,000 under budget. The trend of decreased medical expenses during the pandemic has continued to prove true. And I feel that once the pandemic reaches the conclusion, we would anticipate expenses returning to a normal level. At this time, no money reserved for OPEB expense, which is the money used to fund our OPEB account. We budgeted $400,000 this year. Until there's some more clarity on our state aid number, we will not be funding our OPEB account. Speech therapists are $134,000 over budget. This has been due to the need to reach out to outside contracts to fill positions that we have budgeted, but we were unable to fill. And this can be contributed, this is attributed to some of our savings on our salary line as well. There have been some significant HVAC repairs so far this year, causing our projected budget to be about half a million dollars over the line item. We do have some flexibility to transfer some of these expenses to our capital repair fund if need on the road, however. The district is projected to be $246,000 over budget on tuition to other districts. This has been due to the increase of Wunsaka students choosing to attend other districts to pursue other educational pathways. And finally, the property equipment budget series is $1.33 million over budget. As we nearly finalize the process of our CARES Act, the process of finalizing our CARES ending, we will be able to transfer some of this money out and apply it against the money we're receiving for our CARES Act across that entire budget series. I think the biggest thing to take away from this update at this time is that there's a lot up in the air. And the biggest piece that's still up in the air is our final tabulation for our state aid for this fiscal year. Once we receive that, we'll have our CARES Act grants finalized. We'll be able to offset some of the expense that we receive through the General Fund to those CARES Act funds, and we'll see how everything shakes up when everything's finalized, which I'm anticipating should happen in January. At this time, if anyone has any questions, I can take them now.
I think one comment I'd like to make is that it is very uncertain time. We don't know what the state's going to do. And if we have, if they cut our aid, that will could have a major impact. But if we do get our money, and we do get our CARES Act funded, then we could have offsetting revenues and expenditures where we would not be affected greatly or even at all. You mentioned January. I have no idea when that's going to be, because the governor has not really attacked her budget. She has not prepared it, because she's waiting for that extra stimulus funds. Those funds are necessary to hopefully cover the deficit in the state. If we don't, and if she does, if we do get that stimulus money or that extra boost, then things could be right back to normal, and we might get all our funds on top of getting our CARES Act grants. So right now, we're showing with the numbers that we have, $130,000 surplus, which is basically a break even. By $132,000 on some 80-something million of revenues is a blip. And so we we have more, we have more work to do, but we have to wait for the state to make a decision as to how it affects the state, our funding, and how her budget is going to affect the city's budget, because that may have an impact on what happens to us. So more to come. Any other comments?
There's still a lot of unknowns right now, really, across the board. And I think we're in a position to deal with whatever comes our way, and we'll be fiscally nimble to take on whatever challenges head our way going forward. So.
Okay. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a financial update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. NATO, Mrs. Capwell. Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. NATO.
Yes.
Next, unfinished business. We were to vote on the memorandum of agreement regarding the part-time custodial slash maintenance employees to assist with cleaning due to COVID. And we didn't do that, make that vote last time, but we have not had, I guess there's been no action from local 1137 or the Education Department. And so at this point, I'll make a motion to withdraw this item from the agenda until such time as the union and the department have that conversation and prepare documents for us to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. NATO. Any discussion? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. NATO.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and vote on amendments to the non-union benefits policy for first passage, because we had, we've discussed this before, but we made changes, so we'll write back to first passage. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. NATO. Any additional discussion on this item? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yep, yes.
Mrs. NATO.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the memorandum of agreement with the Rhode Island Department of Education, which is, which regards the boiler for the high school that we had approved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. NATO. Mr. Perrier, do we need to, do you want to provide more discussion on this?
Yeah, this is just the standard MOA that we receive from the Department of Ed in regards to funding for capital projects. This one's for $109,879, and the entire balance will be applied towards the high school boilers. The only thing that's kind of odd for me here is normally after this approval, everybody on the school committee would sign the MOA. There's signs, there's room for everyone to sign. I will contact RIDE tomorrow and see if there's something that we can do, because I don't really, it's going to be tough for all you to come in and sign this. I'll work with RIDE to figure out if there's an alternate, or if maybe we only need to obtain a signature or two in order to get this processed. I'll reach out to the school committee. I'll let, I'll report back on the next meeting to to see how that worked out.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. NATO.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the remaining non-union contracts. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. NATO. Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
We're going to discuss this. I'm turning it over to you to discuss.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So this.
Don't worry, we'll get to the vote.
I'm jumping the gun a little bit. So we had the conversation about the exempt versus the the non-exempt remaining non-union contracts that we had discussed at the last, the last closed session meeting. So this is just the approval of the remaining non-union contracts.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. McGee? Any discussion? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. NATO.
Yes.
And again, before, I want to thank everyone for coming to be part of this meeting. And again, thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, Ellie, for a great two years.
Thank you.
You will be missed.
You're welcome. Can I just, can I just say that? That this committee was, and all my 14 years of serving on school committees, this was the best school committee I've ever served on.
Wow.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm going to miss everyone.
You're going to miss me, too.
Well, let's stay in touch. We'll keep you up.
Keep in touch, yep.
Please.
Yeah, and if anybody travels south, let me know.
Will do. You, too, Rebecca. Make sure you stay in touch.
I, I, I will.
All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:54. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. NATO. Second by everybody. You're all call.
Chairman Borger. Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Well, I'm not sure. Yes. If we don't get off, it can't end.
That's right.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. NATO.
I'll record that as a yes.
A maybe.
A maybe. Thanks again, everybody.
Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.